All right, we're gonna call this meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners being held remotely.
Recording in progress.
On Zoom and stream live on RCTV and YouTube, the RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items of the official agenda. We ask that all questions and comments from the public be directed to the Chair, that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Commissioner DePacino will be the Board Secretary. Could I please ask all participants to identify themselves? John, 65 Avalon Road. Bob, 91 Arcadia.
Marilena B, 18 Strawberry Hill Lane.
Dave Talbot, Commissioner, at 75 Linden.
Is there anybody from the public? No?
No one from the public, nope.
Okay, all right. Well, no public comment, um, so why don't we hear from Jason Small, please? Thank you, Jason.
Well, um, I don't have anything to bring up at this moment.
Okay. How about moving down to the liaisons for the Board? Having done, no public, so let's go right to number three. Approval of the Board Meeting Minutes Attachment One. Phil, if you could, please.
Okay, very good. Move of the Board of Commissioners approved the meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2021, meeting on the recommendation of General Manager.
Your second? Second. All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Marilena B, aye.
Both are aye. All right, passes unanimously. All right, uh, moving down to item number four, uh, report from the Citizens Advisory Board meeting, Dave? Do you have them?
So, um, if I was supposed to be at the meeting, I wasn't, so I don't know.
Okay, but I was, so.
Okay.
The alter ego Dave, I guess.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, this was Phil's turn.
Interception by.
Basically, um, they talked about, and then you're gonna hear the same things in a little while here. The General Manager gave an update, and there was also a update from Greg on the Integrated Resource Report. And you actually can see these are in the agenda already, so that's going to be the same, the same, pretty much the same, so. That's about, that about sums it up. There was, there was some discussion on, I'll just bring it up now, the motion on the, um, the nuclear, um, the original was discussion about removing the 40% on that, but they decided not to do that in the, in the end, so, and I'll leave, leave that, go forward.
Okay. Um, moving on to item number five, the Channel Manager Report, Colleen.
Hi, happy holidays to everybody. Um, 2020 historical calendars are out. Um, if any of the Board members or CAD members would want, like one mailed to their home, please let Erica know, we can get that out. Uh, Electric Vehicle Charging Strategies webinar, we've come up with a date, it's February 1st at 7:00 PM. There'll be a press release going out right after New Year's Eve, and as we know, that'll provide education on electric vehicles and RMLD rebates for electrification. Um, upcoming, but not too many dates, Renewable Choice Program launch that, uh, Greg can speak to later. High School Art Contest kickoff, uh, and we enjoy that one every year, and the Elementary Art Contest Awards that typically happens in February, so Joyce will, uh, announce the date on that. And, um, what, we can decide then whether or not we'll meet in person or virtual. We are, um, doing the AV room over, some carpet and paint, uh, and putting in new technologies so we can start every time, I think we're gonna be able to start some virtual. Uh, it gets a little scary again, so, uh, we're hoping by the spring that we'll, uh, be able to have that opportunity to meet in person or at least virtual. So, uh, this afternoon, when I got back from my board meeting, I sent everyone, um, the Vineyard Wind announcement on the 32 megawatts awarded to ENE, uh, for the municipal light, uh, plants that are their clients. Uh, that, um, 32 megawatts, as I mentioned last time, is basically excess, so if it was gonna be like a GE HeliI 12 megawatt, uh, turbine, and by the time it gets built, it's a 14, it'll prove, um, present some excess, and that's what was calculated out, and that's what's coming to the, to the MLP. So how that'll be allocated and the negotiation between Vineyard Wind and ENE will be taking place between now and April. So I'll keep you updated on that. Um, there will be two omnibus bills, and one will contain a whole bunch of stuff, but after my second legislative meeting last week with Senator Barrett, um, he is assuring me that the Green Communities one, that will allow each of the four towns, um, to join individually. He's in favor of everyone that joins pays, uh, currently that's at .0005 cents per kilowatt hour, which is only about 41 cents per month for a typical residential, not talking about commercial. But it is open-ended, uh, and, uh, I would expect that the CEC funding, uh, will probably need to go up in the future, but that's just my guess. So this way, if, um, if everybody joins individually, um, he's a little bit concerned about the loophole that was in place originally on the IOU, and Vin Ragucci had, um, suggested he would do some more research on the history of that. Um, so I will keep you up to date on that. I know that the town of Reading wants to, uh, get going on submitting for that. Um, and so I was copying Karen as well, so she can see how we're making out on legislative, um, meetings. Um, the second bill, uh, will discuss offshore wind. So on that first bill, you're gonna have a whole bunch of stuff in the bill, and what Senator Barrett basically said is that he would rise that to the top, uh, cause only a few things will probably go through on that one. They're in session, uh, and it'll be decided on before the summer. So the second one will discuss the offshore wind, and we're very hopeful that that one is gonna allow us, now that we've got our foot in the door, to be able to buy more wind, offshore wind, uh, off the coast of Massachusetts as those, um, opportunities come up, and then possibly as they build them all the way up the East Coast. So that's gonna be really exciting. Um, we are getting ready to release the construction bid for the EV charging for the grant, three in the town of Reading, and two in the town of Wilmington, but we had to write the construction bid, uh, so that Wilmington is an alternate at this point, because I don't have a signed license agreement for them. We do have the signed license agreement for Reading, so we're hoping to get that Wilmington one done as soon as possible. Um, but we need to get it out the door. In this way, if they don't have the license signed, there will be no issues. We called the AG's office, there's no issues with how we're writing it, we can award the Reading one, and then we may have to rebid, uh, for the Wilmington one, but, um, I'm working really hard to try to help them, um, get that signed. Uh, the Innovate Mass CEC Grant, which is approximately 250,000, and that's for, we were talking about Greentown Labs and different technologies that come forward, so it's not a particular grant for a particular thing, it's an innovation in which you submit and you get judged for your technology. So we talked about the Stash Packitized Thermal Storage Heat Pump System that we wanted to see if we could put it into the Wilmington Housing Authority, there's 20 units there. Um, I think they're gonna pass for the next round and wait to see how Taunton does. Now, the big difference between Taunton and Wilmington is the Taunton Housing Authority, uh, heating systems are fossil fuel, uh, oil that are at the end of the useful life. So right away, there'll be a value, and the Housing Authority owns and maintains those heating systems. In Wilmington, the heating system is resistive. So while the Housing Authority owns it, there's not a lot of maintenance that's required, so there's not a lot of cost in the budget. Um, so when you go to a heat pump, there's a lot of things that they have to consider. In addition to this, though, there is a $60 million grant coming in or funding coming in to help all the housing authorities with heat pump technology. So that's coming down the road, and we're gonna work with Wilmington to try to dovetail that in, probably in the spring. So I'll keep you updated on that. Um, the ARPA Bill, which is the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, as you know, it focuses on health and, uh, economy, uh, stimulus due to COVID. So believe it or not, that lands on, uh, support of electrification, um, money. And so as we find out more of what's going to, um, qualify for that, uh, we can, uh, I can, I can give you an update on that. So, um, next time we meet, though, um, I'm gonna go over, I'm gonna have a slide on bidding. I know the last couple of times, or we've had discussions where, why, why sometimes we only have one bid? So I'm gonna give you a couple of slides on that to try to explain it to you in a little bit more detail. We don't have any bids tonight, which is one bid. But I do wanna let you know about, you know, prevailing wages, how that impacts it, and what the rejection issues are as we follow the law. So I'll put that on the agenda for next time, so that, um, we can all be on the same page for that. And I believe, uh, that's all I have for community updates. Thank you.
Are there any questions? I, I did have one, Colleen, um, when we go, when Reading goes forward with Green Communities, legislation goes forward, let's just say a community opts out, is the RMLD billing system capable of separating out communities? I know right now it's probably rate-based.
Right, well, it wouldn't be an opt-out, so originally, the first testimony, yeah. The first testimony that I put in was to say, let's everyone get to join for free, uh, with the one IOU meter that's in Wilmington. And that didn't go too well, because I think they, they're looking at, they wanna be able to seed, uh, the fund. And so then the second round, um, and actually Jen Crawford and Vin Ragucci are now redrafting the language to give to Senator Barrett that will say, "Join individually, um, but pay into the trust." So you don't have to opt out, you can only opt in. So if you wanna join, you join, and the MLP, in accordance with the existing legislation, would be the billing agency, billing only for that town. Cause right now, if Reading joins, you guys would have to vote, and then everyone gets billed whether they join or not. So that's what we're trying to avoid with, with changing the legislations, because we have, like Littleton and Boxford. So Littleton joined, um, but Boxford doesn't have an IOU meter, so they don't wanna let Boxford join. So they're kind of backwards from us, and then you got Taunton, and then you have us. So you have a number of systems who have multiple towns that they serve that the legislation probably needs to be tweaked, uh, to allow more people to join.
Yeah, I, I just thought, like, if it, if it comes down to it, let's just say, somebody does not wanna join, you're like, I'm not gonna, right? So then, you know, the building's gonna have to be separated by town. Like, I don't know if the building was set up by geography.
Yeah, we can build by town.
You can?
Yes.
I, I, that was just, that was the inquiry, cause I know right now, most everything would be rate-based or, but if we had to do a line, line item budget to change software, maybe that would be good to attack that now.
Yeah, we, we've, um, we're working on it, we, if it's coming. We also are gonna separate out the bill, so it's very clear that this is not a charge from the RMLD. So we've got work to do, um, we're hitting it from every end, but we wanna get this legislation changed. Fingers crossed, we've been working hard on this.
Good. It's gonna be a Colleen bill.
Oh, no.
Um, all right, uh, release of the executive session minutes from 2017 to 2020, Mr. Vice Chair Pacino, please.
Okay, so, let me just make a statement, uh, review, uh, to release the minutes has been performed. No executive session, meaning minutes were released at this time based on this review.
Thank you, Phil. Uh, all right. Number seven, update on employee survey, attachment two, Ms. Walsh, please.
Okay, I'm gonna start and then hand it over to Janet, if that's okay, Chair?
Okay, yes, okay.
Okay, so in your packets, uh, you received a scope of work from Culture Solutions Group. Um, hopefully everyone had a chance to go through that. They specialize in electric utility, private and not-for-profit MLPs across the nation in the New England area. So in 2022, the RMLD will conduct a cultural assessment, and I'll have Janet just go over some of the highlights. Janet?
Okay, Cultural Solutions Group is a company that has 20 years' experience of performing the culture surveys and improvement strategies for utilities, as Colleen had mentioned. They use a tool called the Dennison Organizational Cultural Survey, and it consists of 50 base questions and covers four main areas that consist of adaptability, mission, involvement, and consistency. And then the results are presented, showing relative cultural strengths and weaknesses. The survey is highly customizable, as we can add our own questions. The end product will include RMLD receiving a baseline assessment showing strengths and weaknesses in the RMLD culture. The baseline will create a benchmark against which to measure success of past change initiatives, as well as target future change and engagements. And we will have a clear prioritization of RMLD's short, mid, and long-term organizational improvement efforts. The results will also provide an increased understanding and utilization of culture as a business-oriented, behavioral, tangible, and results-tailored system. Currently, Culture Solutions Group is participating in the RMLD procurement process. We still need to finalize the scope and write the contract, and then create a schedule. We plan to schedule Caroline Fisher, the Culture Solutions Group representative, to present to the Board at the end of January, the beginning of February, somewhere in that time area. And at that time, we can learn more about the process, and you can ask her any questions that may come to mind. So thank you for listening, and stay tuned for updates.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That, that'll be, when, when we have her come in, uh, and Erica can do a doodle poll of what works best, um, cause I wanna give her the proper amount of time, especially if the Board wants to customize questions and stuff like that. Uh, so she might be able to come in by Zoom, kind of go over the whole process, the four steps, and then maybe we can have a second meeting or whatever, we can decide from there, uh, based on what, what else we have on agenda, whether or not maybe we wanna have a separate meeting for that specifically.
Yeah, it almost sounds like a separate meeting, I think would be, would be great, you know, dedicate that hour or whatever is just possible. I don't wanna speak for everybody else, but, um, I don't know if that, anyone feels like that's a good idea? Yes!
Yeah, sounds good.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Did you have a question? I got a question.
Yes, please, Phil.
So I noticed that a lot of things are blacked out. Why, why are these things blacked out in the agreement?
Um, that was just redacted pricing, because, um, when we were going out for pricing and stuff, it, it's, it's like competitive, uh, for, for pricing right now, because it was just illustrative pricing when she sent it in.
Okay. I assume we'll have that discussion when we, when it comes back, I would hope.
The pricing?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, as soon as the contract is signed, uh, I'll send it out, and you can see all the pricing.
Okay.
We were just, we were using this as a template, we didn't want other people to, um, see the pricing. It's under $50,000, if that.
Okay.
Okay.
But that's all that is, that's redacted.
Okay. Any, any more questions? Okay. All right, moving on to item number eight, Integrated Resource Report. Uh, Mr. Phipps, please, Greg?
Great. All right, so, um, we're gonna move through this fairly quickly. Four key topics for tonight, just a quick snapshot of our year-to-date power supply. And then, uh, we'll talk a little about the, the power supply strategy going forward in the context of decarbonization. Um, that'll bring up the topic of, uh, nuclear as being part of that portfolio going forward, there's a motion tied to that. And then we're gonna talk very briefly about battery, um, and the battery is basically to recognize that as part of the portfolio, um, and we've got some specific plans that we'll share at the next meeting or combination of the January and February meeting. So those are the four topics for tonight. In terms of the power supply cost, this is an update to the slide that was in the package. Uh, the numbers are basically the same, the, the change of this one was the addition of this purple line. Um, and there's, well, let me, let me take a step back here. In terms of the structure, on the left-hand side here, this big, the big chart is basically a total power supply. Um, on it is, in the different lines, the purple line is the new addition, which is the RMLD budget, which is basically just a straight flat line, take the annual budget divided by 12. Um, the red line, and the same thing for the smaller ones as well, the red lines in each one of these are the actuals through October. And then the blue line is, is kind of the, we used to call it the ENE budget, but it's really an ENE forecast, it goes into our, our planning process. And then the green line in each one of these across the bottom is basically the cumulative difference relative to, um, the budget, in this particular case, relative to the RMLD budget, which is that flat line, that purple line. Um, so those are the, that's the, that's kind of the big picture. On the right-hand side here, in the center, I should say, the three major components, which you guys all know, energy, capacity, and transmission. Those three components sum to be the total purchased power. Um, you guys also know this little, you can see my mouse, right? So on the right-hand side here, fuel and PPC, right? Fuel, which is energy, and PPCT, which is basically capacity and transmission. Those basically flow straight through, um, to the individual monthly bills. Um, we count for, um, timing changes in terms of billing and, um, actual usage and actual numbers, et cetera, but those flow straight through. A couple of things I want you guys to, to walk away with. Um, the unit cost, whether it's unit cost for energy, for capacity, or transmission, those are fairly well-known. So most of the variability you've seen here is driven by usage. Um, in the case of energy, and then capacity peaks in the case of capacity and transmission peaks. You guys all remember that the capacity is one hour, which is hour, actually, it was done a year ago. Um, and then transmission, which is once every 12 months in the current calendar year. These, um, three components, there's a fair amount of variability in terms of energy, cause it's driven by usage, but capacity and transmission in both cases, we are under budget. Capacity about $700,000 under budget, transmission about $1 million under budget. Um, part of the reason for both of those are just the peaks, this year have been lower for the transmission, and there have been a fair amount of, of, uh, resettlements, um, in the case of the capacity stuff. It's good to be on the lower end of this, as opposed to being over budget. Um, energy, though, is above budget, and that's driven by higher energy, um, and higher usage. So we, um, in fact, between 2020 and 2021, the usage was a little bit higher than we expected. Um, 2020, we finished off at about 650,000 megawatt hours for the year, and we're on track to be about 659,000 megawatt hours for 2021. Now, part of it was a difference between COVID, and this little note across the bottom is that on the ENE forecast, it historically has been driven by a trailing, um, three-year average. Um, going forward in time, that, that model doesn't work as well, because, um, in the past, uh, usage and peaks, et cetera, are fairly stable, that's changing, so um, we continue to update the models going forward. All said and done, um, in the lower right-hand corner, the 2020 to 2021 total actuals will likely be below budget for the year. Um, the snapshot in this big chart here in the middle, that 987 is the current snapshot relative to the RMLD budget. Now, remember, the RMLD budget is a straight flat line. Um, so we really wanna try and compare this to the, uh, the ENE forecast, but when I give you an idea, at the end of the day, we're measured by, um, uh, our performance against the actual budget, and we're expecting to be, at the end of 2021, to be below budget for power supply in total. I'm gonna jump to the next slide, but before I do any questions on this snapshot of year-to-date power supply. Okay. Um, we're gonna give you, we're gonna talk about our decarbonization strategy, but it's gonna be important to talk through some context. And so my apologies, you know, I tend not to do word slides like this, but this one was pretty simple to kind of walk us through the, you know, the context as we get to the next two slides. So we've talked extensively, these first two bullets, about the 2021 climate law. Um, it, it is a driver of electrification. Um, we've basically looked at the, uh, the forecast, a variety of different forecasts, and taken our forecast. We basically projected out 2050, you'll see that in two slides. It'll be somewhere between 60 and 70%, that's our current forecast of where our load will be in 2049, 2050, relative to what it is in 2022. Um, so load is going up, no surprise there, and we've already started that increase. Um, and that, that increase is somewhere between 1.3, 1.4, 1.8% to paint pot in one year it is. Um, and obviously, it's driven a lot by the adoption of electric vehicles and air-source heat pumps, and the removal of, uh, carbon generation from transportation and buildings. Again, no surprise, there's a question of just how fast that happens. And we've tried to take a conservative approach here by being only, only 60%. Some models have it doubling, um, in the next 50 years, but let's not go crazy, we'll shoot for roughly 2/3, 60 to 70%. That same climate bill, um, on the generation side for electricity, has phased out, or will be phasing out, um, over the next couple decades, most of the natural gas generation. That natural gas generation, on an average, for the past several years, on a seasonal basis, is roughly about 50% of the total generation. So that generation is gonna be phased out, natural gas generation, so basically, we have load going up and supply being reduced, right? So that's what's, that's what's coming down the road. It's not a huge issue, we just have to plan for it and prepare for it. So, there is, um, uh, the regional, so a couple of things to keep in mind, um, about the sources that we can access to replace that natural gas. And the four sources are wind, solar, hydro, and nuclear. And so we're gonna talk about each one of those, and look at the profile of each one of those, and kind of give you an idea of what we think the, the, uh, mix of those are gonna be going forward in time to minimize risk, both financial risk and resiliency risk, the availability of that supply. You guys know from the work that we've been doing already, and the various projects that you guys have approved, um, we are actively chasing after regional hydro projects. Um, the reality is, they're not really going to be anything significant in terms of new hydro projects being built in our region. So when we chase the regional hydros, we wanna either extend existing projects, or we wanna quickly jump on projects that somebody else is abandoning for what, not renewing for whatever reason, and capture those. But that growth of additional hydro is not gonna be significant, and you'll see that in the, in the chart in a few moments. Um, in thinking of hydro, there's sources from Hydro Quebec, there's a lot of, uh, capacity up there um, that could feed ISO New England. Um, the challenge right now is the, is the limit or the lack of transmission, um, which will limit the availability, not zero out, but it's just, it's gonna be challenging over the next several decades, between permits and actual construction of those lines, to get those down. So while we wanna prepare for it and allow for it, it's not gonna be the end-all savior in terms of, of replacing these natural gas. It will be a piece, but it won't be, it won't be a big piece until, you know, we get further out a couple decades. Um, obviously, where the growth is gonna come from is gonna be this last bullet down here, solar and wind. They need to be built. Um, you guys approved two solar projects, um, in the past two meetings. Um, we are signing an LOI on one of those tomorrow. Um, and then we're signing a contract on the previous one, the Broadleaf one that you guys approved two, uh, two periods ago. So those projects are 2024, 2025, and 2026 build-outs. Um, so there, it's not gonna come online instantly. Um, there's also a limit in terms of the delays, um, while there's a significant amount of offshore wind that's anticipated. Um, all of us expect that it won't be quite the magnitude in, uh, 2027, 2028, 2029, when that offshore wind comes in place. Part of it limited by, um, just building the, building the, uh, the towers, et cetera, and part of it is the transmission facilities to get that power back into, uh, uh, the New England space. Again, it's not to say that these won't happen, but we're just trying to be pragmatic in terms of how fast they happen. How fast natural gas goes away, and how fast nuclear, not nuclear, but solar and wind come and play. So with that context of basically load going up, supply going down, and replacements, um, not being prolific, um, we think it's prudent to, uh, to contract a larger portion of our, uh, of our forecasted purchases now. So that's the context. Let me jump to, um, so, as we talked about, we have four options, right? Hydro, wind, solar, and nuclear. And we, we like solar and wind and hydro, obviously, it's part of our portfolio, we're making it as much as we can. Um, but we also realize that relative to natural gas and nuclear, these are intermittent sources, so the solar doesn't generate when it's not sunny. Um, and, and so I'll, I'll walk you through the, the context, but at the end of the day, the key driver is these are seasonal intermittent resources, and we need to plan for that accordingly. On the left-hand side, this is a seasonal one, it goes from basically January to December, this is actual 2020 data in terms of these stacked bars. Um, so we go from winter on the left, summer in the middle, and back to winter on the right. Um, the RMLD load is basically superimposed, to give you an idea, it's not tied to the scale, but it's just giving an idea of the relative size, not a relative size, but the relative shape of our curve that matches the actual output of hydro, wind, and solar. Um, on this light green one at the very bottom, real quickly, um, it's seasonal, obviously, it's strongest running in the springtime, when all of the spring runoff happens. By the time, oops, do that, by the time we get to, by the time we get to the summertime, which is By the time, oops, do that, by the time we get to, by the time we get to the summertime, which is where our peak is, um, hydro is, is limited, again, not saying we don't want it, but we need to be realistic in terms of how it feeds it. Wind is very similar to hydro and from a seasonality perspective, in the summertime, it is less windy than it is in the wintertime. Again, not to say that it's bad, but just we need to anticipate it. And then solar, solar is strongest in the summertime, obviously, because it's driven by the sun. And it's lowest, you can see the relative thickness of these bars on the right hand and left-hand side in the wintertime. Again, no surprise. Um, so we need to really think about making sure that as our seasonal load, and this is the seasonal profile of RMLD, this blue line. And the same thing on the right-hand side, this right-hand chart is basically the daily average. So this blue line is RMLD daily load averaged over the course of a year. This is a 24-hour snapshot. And this orange line below is again, the 2020 um average daily output of all the solar arrays in the ISO New England area, so a pretty good proxy. Again, there's a lot of, of potential here, but we're really most focused about the shape. And the shape is strongest in the middle of the day and it falls off in the evening, obviously, and obviously in the middle of the night on the left-hand side, there's nothing here. We need to fill our entire portfolio 24 hours a day. So we want solar, we want wind, we want hydro, but we also need to realize that from a performance perspective, it, it, it doesn't always run and we need power 24 hours a day, as you can see from these curves. So if we look to the decarbonization strategy, so this chart does a couple of things, right? At the end of the day, what we're looking at is what our purchases were gonna be, so 2022, this is the total um, total height of each one of these lines to 2049, and again, that's a roughly about 65% growth or realistically just under 1.6% compound annual growth rate. Doesn't seem like a lot, but over three decades, it's a significant increase. That dark line is the annualized target due to the climate law. Pardon my typo there, but that's the climate law, it's the one we put in place for policy 30. And those, these are basically the increasing number of certificates that we're gonna require. The reason why that's important is that's going to continue to drive us to have non-carbon resources. So this purple area over here on the left, we'll use, we'll still use it in 2025 and 26 and 27, but our intention as we go forward in time is to do less carbon-based generation. It's not gonna go away completely, but less. And the, the way we can fill it are the four areas we talked about, wind, solar, hydro and nuclear. So we're gonna extend any existing hydros and, and find wherever we can new ones, but it's not gonna be significant. You can see this blue area here in the stacked bar. And the solid ones are, are existing contracts. The shaded ones are contracts that we have not yet signed, so we've got to fill this, this gray stuff. And then the, the second piece is the uh, the, what we're gonna propose here is to fill the nuclear piece, and I'll talk a little about nuclear in just a moment. We're gonna add new solar and wind. So this green and this yellow here are just existing contracts. Um, the one we're gonna sign tomorrow will get added to this, for example. Um, we are gonna continue over the next, yeah, over the next several years to continue to uh present to you additional solar contracts, some which will be RMLD-owned, some which will be PPA-structured, so that's coming down the road. Um, as we mentioned many times before, more recently, we're gonna do our best to add as much as possible generation within our territory. Um, and that has the benefit of reducing our, our capacity and transmission costs, so that's a good thing there. And at the end of the day, what we want to do is create a nice mix that's both um provides the stability of ongoing supply. Um, that doesn't concentrate our, our resources, our generation resources in any one particular asset. So we're looking here, and what I'm proposing to you in a moment. Um, and the reason why this is updated, I just put these three labels in here, nuclear contracted, nuclear proposed and, and open to be contracted. So before I go to the proposal, um, what we're basically suggesting is, is I look at the, at the forecast. Um, the combination of the hash to be contracted and the existing nuclear contracts, we're basically trying to get into the mid 30% of our portfolio range as a solid, reliable, you know, 24/7 um, what used to be called base load. Um, so that we cover our positions in the nighttime and we cover our positions when the sun is not shining or we get dry spells, et cetera. So it's part of our risk mitigation strategy. Um, we think that that roughly third to 40% is a good match. And so in order to do, and the other thing to keep in mind is uh, we're not the only people looking at this strategy, there's only currently, there's only three nuclear facilities, there are only three nuclear reactors that are in place um today. And our view is that it'll be unlikely for any new um nuclear reactors to be built in the region. There might be replacements of modular reactors that go into the existing sites at Seaburke and or Millstone. But the working assumption, there's three reactors there. So there is going to be, because there's only four sources, nuclear being one and being one that's 24/7. And there's already a, I don't call it a run or a stampede, but there's a, a race to secure these assets. So what we're gonna, so that's, before I go into the motion and talk about the specific motion, I want to just leave it open for any discussion in terms of the decarbonization strategy and the mix that we're trying to do between solar, wind, hydro and nuclear. Questions, thoughts, discussion?
Greg, I, I have a question. Obviously it was a big disappointment for, for us to see that Maine turned down the Quebec hydro, which would have obviously solved a lot of problems, not just for us, but for a lot of people.
Yes.
Um, do you have any idea if uh Quebec is trying to um bypass Maine, get around Maine, going through other states where we could potentially trade um energy uh for uh energy that they might receive for, from Quebec hydro for other energy that these other states might have, I mean, New York comes to mind.
Yep.
Vermont, um.
Yep.
So the question becomes a, you know, if I were Quebec hydro, I would go, there's gotta be ways of, I've got so much, so much electricity to uh spare that I can literally throw away a lot of it and still be just fine, thank you very much.
And, and, and as you mentioned, you know, our load is gonna grow, not only will our load grow, but the whole region is gonna grow from the electrification perspective. So, so you're right, it's, it, there's not only the push from Hydro Quebec, but there's the pull from the region. And there's gonna be a lot of discussions in terms of how those transmission lines lay out and wherever they come from, so. Um, you know, no surprise, uh whether the transmission lines are coming up through uh southern Massachusetts for the offshore wind or they're coming down from Hydro Quebec, there's going to be a, a lot of discussions and a lot of compromise and a lot of politics associated with getting those in place. So it's not to say that it won't come. Um, but it's not, it's not an instant solution to say, hey, look, you know, we'll take wind from the south and hydro from the north and we're in good shape. Um, we, to the extent we as RMLD want to encourage that, um, and we're, we do through E and E and through the, the efforts uh, uh us as RMLD as well as through us as a consortium. Um, we actually have access to some of the existing transmission lines that are in place right now, but they're very small. So the answer to your question is yes. Um, what we're trying to do here is just make sure that we're prudent, again, not, not fill the entire portfolio, but fill a bigger piece of it with something that we know we can latch on to now um and not get boxed out so that we're, we're, that, so we don't have the source. Um, or, and also lock in pretty good prices. So that's kind of the reason why we're looking at the strategy right now. So we're gonna go after solar and wind and whatever hydro we can get. Um, but we want to lock in a nuclear now where we can.
And, and, and there's a whole new um wave of lawsuits going against Cape Wind. They just started up.
Just started.
And you're not gonna get through Vermont. If you couldn't get through New Hampshire, live free or die, and you can't get through Maine, you are not gonna get through Vermont. Uh, with, with the, with the line, that's a, yeah, coming down through New York and then coming through Western Mass is probably.
Or, or in the sea all the way around.
Oh, yeah, that submarine cable, yeah, coming down from.
Yeah, really, they use it in Norway all the time.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a, it's, it's, it's not, and, and then the other big thing is, there's a new vibe out there that there's no way that we can meet the goals that are set by the state, by the growth of, of solar and wind. It's just not, there's just not enough capacity. We, we're gonna tap out somewhere about 2030, 2035 right now with what you can do. And, and, and I mean, there's a, there's a lot of things out there that we just don't know yet, but there's gonna be some other energy source at some point, but what can you do? I can plan, plan ahead.
So that's, with that, with all those uncertainties in place and, and um, you know, one of the things that we're, we're assuming in our planning is that um decarbonization is not gonna soften. There, there's increasing, Chairman, as you mentioned, there's increasing pressure to say, look, it's just not practical. But the pressure is gonna be on find another solution or find a, find a solution that's more expensive. Um, yeah. And, and again, um, you know, from our perspective, our responsibilities to our ratepayers, you know, our responsibility is reliable, cost competitive, green power. So we know that, that the compliance piece, you know, if it gets softened, our view, it's, it probably is not gonna get softened, so we need to plan for this. Um, and be as prudent as we possibly can. So that's why as we're looking at our portfolio, you know, on the right-hand side, as much in, as much within territory generation as we can, which will be solar, by the way. Right? And then we've, we're doing some, some exploration of other non-traditional ways to generate electricity within territory. Um, but we, we, we have to look at the mix in a, in a pragmatic perspective. So that's why we're saying now, as opposed to waiting, that we should move on, on nuclear. And again, there are people next to us that are thinking the same thing and trying to, trying to move forward. Should I move to the next slide and kind of walk you through a little background in terms of the specific project? Okay. So, so the proposal here is um to add nuclear. And, you know, there was a question in the CAB meeting associated with um, you know, the limit of 40% that's in the motion. I, I wanted, I, I positioned this this way. We actually had, so there are three reactors. Um, two in Millstone, we get power from all three, well, we get power from one of the two Millstone reactors, the one that has the longer license, and then we get power from Seabrook. Um, and so our goal is to get more power from both of those facilities, more from Millstone and more from Seabrook. And what we started a couple of months ago was a discussion not only with, with the Seabrook facilities, which is through Nixterra, but also with the Millstone facility. And currently our contract with Millstone goes way back to the, the original construction and is managed through EMWIC. So we've basically gone out, we've, we've, we've approached Dominion and said, we want to buy power from you. And they said, great, you're one of several people that have asked to buy power from us. They're basically booked out through 2029. I shouldn't say that, they're, they're booked out with their effects through 2029 and they're booked off with their power to 2025. So I don't have a proposal yet from them, I don't have an LOI from them yet. Um, but we're working on either us directly with them or through an E and E consortium. I was hoping by now to have that. Um, but I do have a specific LOI for Nixterra, for Seabrook. And what we're trying to do as we go forward in time is to kind of balance the two facilities, so we're not overly um dependent upon either one of those two. So while this looks like kind of an umbrella wrapper, um it's really tied to two specific um projects, two specific, two specific proposals. One which we're ready to uh, to produce. Out of that incremental volume, the Nixterra one in the initial, it, it so, so the structure here is basically to take us out through 2049 in the case of Seabrook and 2046 in the case of, of Millstone, which are as long as those two licenses go today. We looked at our portfolio and we looked at the steps in terms of, of that, going back to the previous slide, you can see that it grows over time. We're basically renewing contracts that are in place already on the nuclear side and there's steps in 2026, 2030, 2036 and 2043. Um, the Seabrook one would start in 2031. I realize that's nine years from now, but 2031 and go up to 2049. And so I fill a portion of it. So that, and it would have effects tied to it. And the pricing, as you noticed here, again, they're favored, the pricing is very good right now, you know. In the context of higher demand for a limited asset, we, we are seeing already upward pressure on that pricing, which is part of the reason why we're trying to get these nuclear things in place soon around and later. So this represents a very specific um uh Seabrook proposal. And then um, we, we haven't got the LOI in place because Dominion's just kind of, they know they want to sell power. Um, but we haven't got the LOI in place yet, but that'll be one right behind it that'll be very similar to the Seabrook one. The pricing will probably be within a couple of dollars, but we'll see what they come back with. So that's the intent behind this um motion, to allow us to do both of those projects in one, in one motion. Questions on the, on the intent? Okay. Uh, Chairman Coulter, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you.
For this, and then I'll come back to batteries afterwards.
Yep, very informative, very informative, thank you. All right.
You said one question.
Yes, please, Dave.
I agree, agree fully with the strategy, uh, looks great. When, when this peaks out, what, what would the total, like right now we're at 15% nuclear, what does it go up to? 25% of our portfolio would be nuclear or 30%?
So it'd be, it'd be roughly, it would peak out um in the mid 30s, right around 36%, 36, 37, 35 to paint upon the year, it's gonna buffer in there.
Greg, can you go back to the other slide?
Absolutely.
Because I know it's going up, but then so is low, so.
Yeah, so in this, in this period, I'm sorry. 24, early 2040s is when we're probably in the 36% range.
Okay. And it's, it's from two, it's from two nuclear plants, not three, right?
It's from, it's from two nuclear plants, but it's, I mean, it's from three, two nuclear. So yes, it's from two nuclear reactors and two nuclear plants. However, um, the Millstone one has two reactors in it. And our current contract is only with one of the reactors.
I see.
And the one reactor that it's with has the longer term con, uh license, it goes out to 2046. Reactor number, reactor number two in Millstone has a, has a license that goes out to 2035 that they're trying to extend. And so in the course of the negotiation, we probably want to be split between the two, but hope that they get a license extension. So that's part of our risk management and we'll probably, when we're done, the goal is to have power from all three reactors is the goal.
Yeah, that's great. And so I guess then the only thing is, you know, nuclear plants sometimes trip and there's a, there's an issue and they get shut down for months and it's, you know, it's, if it's, what happens then if that happens and we have 15% of our power coming from like one nuclear plant that's shut off for a year or? Yeah, that can happen.
A, a, absolutely, and, and I think Dave, that's why we're trying to split it between the three reactors. And so it, it'll be somewhere between 10 and 13, you know, 10 and 12, 20 and 13% so that it's a, it's a small risk from each individual reactor. Um, that's, that's the trade-off and the balance of trying to manage the availability risk and fit the, fit our need for power 24/7. You could also not have it based just on one facility, so that's it. We're trading off and you, you, you raise exactly the right trade-offs we're trying to make. We think this is a good compromise all the way around.
Sure. I'm just curious, what, what happens to rates at that point, if that did happen, or is there a way to hedge and have insurance or? I don't know how that works, but if you do lose like 15% of your load for a year, what happens at that point to rates?
Well, it's in the, in the case, so in the case of the um uh, these are the Seabrook contracts, um it's, it's a guaranteed supply contract. And it's got some limits in terms of the, of the range of pricing on it. So we, we basically push some of that risk off to them. I don't know how the Millstone one's gonna work yet, because we haven't gotten that far down. But, but we know what we're trying to do for those exact reasons to, to minimize the, the, you know. Again, you know that somewhere 10 to 15, sometimes 20 paint upon the seas and, you know, we let that buffer put in place. Um, but the world's, you know, preach to the choir, the world's changing going forward, so we're just trying to put a little bit more, less risk into the portfolios, bottom line.
Did, did they already drill a hole in the side of the containment vessel at Pilgrim, or can we perhaps revive that project?
I, 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 I think so, the thought process. Yeah, no, but, but you bring up a good point and the thought process is the modular, um, the modular nuclear.
Go in there.
Yeah, which, which would be easy to put on an existing site, so we wouldn't use the existing reactor, but use the land nearby. Um, and so that's what some guys are looking at, but again, that's.
Yeah, 20 years.
Yeah, it's, so it's not crazy, but it's not there today.
Mini nuke.
Yeah, mini nuke, you're exactly right, modular nuke as they call it, but exactly right.
Okay, um, any, any more questions from anybody? All right, uh, suggestion motion, please, Phil?
Yeah, so first off, let me say the motion that's in the agenda is the CAB's motion. It's not the board's motion.
Okay.
I, I reworded it. And I'll read it. Move that the uh Board of Commissioners vote on the recommendation of the CAB to accept the General Manager's recommendation to add additional power supply contracts from Seabrook and/or Millstone under facilities such that the total nuclear supply portfolio does not exceed 40% of the RMLD's annual power supply portfolio.
Any discussion? Here we go, do we have a motion?
I made the motion.
Second, sorry, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ms. Pacino, aye.
Yeah, I would aye.
Both are aye.
Really, Navita, aye.
John, stamp back, aye.
All, all, all five commissioners pass. Okay, we want to item number nine.
One, one more, Chairman, just one more quick discussion about battery storage and then I'll.
Yep, sorry. Yep, sorry, sorry.
Yep, and so one other thing that's part of this is part of the portfolio is battery storage. Um, and just obviously at the very top here, lower upper left hand corner, um, battery systems are not generators, they simply shift the time, right? As example, afternoon solar into evening or overnight wind into the daytime. So there's, think about them as in time shifting. In the upper right hand corner, there's that picture. This is our actual existing, we have a we have a um a Bess, a Minute Man system. So we have a battery system at our station three right now that we use regularly. This chart in the lower left hand corner is an example. That yellow curve is when we discharge the battery to reduce our peak loads. So battery systems are good from an economic perspective, from a liability perspective and potentially a resiliency perspective. And and it's a good match to the intermittent nature of the solar and the wind and the hydro. More than more of the solar and the wind than than hydro. And so we basically, um, the E and O team under Ameed's leadership and the I R D team and uh from my perspective, you know, we're looking very aggressively to take that lessons that we learned from the first system and and add additional battery systems throughout our network. And so we will be coming to you with more specific plans for approval um in the January and February meetings. Um, but just to give you an idea of where we're headed, we're looking somewhere between twenty-five and thirty megawatts. Um, typically, we anticipate three hour, three hour batteries. So that would be three megawatt, three megawatt hours per megawatt or ninety megawatts for the system um in either five megawatt or ten megawatt blocks. We've got four areas identified right now. Uh, one is Station Three, which is literally adjacent to the one that's right here. Um, it's, a lot of the site prep is already done. Um, there's a site in industrial way that's also well suited. Um, and then there is the new substation. Um, so you can see the schedule there, starting um potentially as early as late next year and going through twenty twenty four, twenty five would be how we would look at building out these networks um in terms of the battery systems. Because the battery systems um continue to to change from pricing and technology, we anticipate the first group of these, maybe the first fifteen, maybe the first thirty, I don't know yet. But we anticipate leasing those, which is what we did with this first one. Um, that's just basically managing technical risk with the um with the manufacturer of the systems. Um, the driver, even though we're looking at it to do time shift, the driver will be primarily economics. We want them to pay for themselves as quickly as we can. And we've got quite a bit of discussions going on right now. So we're hoping early uh in the next couple of sessions to come with you with a very specific proposal for at least that first one at Station Three and maybe the one thereafter. So we just wanted, we wanted to kind of set the stage that batteries are coming as part of the portfolio, they're viable. Um, and that uh we're going to look for some approval to make some investments in the battery technology coming forward. So that's that's it for me. Any questions on batteries? We'll talk more later, but I just wanted to give you guys a quick heads up.
Is that any any of that have to go through I S O or is it all internal to?
All internal to, these these are all all internal to us. So as you, yeah, so we should be able to do it relatively quickly once we.
Okay.
There's work to do, but we don't have to do interconnect. We have to do network studies with our network that that Hameed's team will walk through, but not the interconnect uh with the I S Os.
Yeah, good.
And thank you.
Thanks. All right, moving on to the quarterly financial update through September thirtieth, twenty twenty one, attachment four. Ms. Margowitz, please, if you could.
Good evening, thank you. So in the packet, you had September and October financials, but we are focusing on the third quarter ended September thirtieth. So I just want, you know, I haven't given a a thorough financial update due to the um the budget and everything that had been going on through the summer. So I just wanted to give the highlights of what went on since our last uh discussion. So we did file the twenty twenty D P U return on July twenty-third. We distributed the um calendar year twenty-two budget, as you know, on October first. It was presented to the C A B on the twentieth and uh it was accepted and recommended to the board and presented it to you on the seventeenth as well, you uh accepted it. The pension obligation transfer to the M M D T is scheduled for payment uh in at the end of December for two million, three fifty-two, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. And that is uh um, that is the um actuarial obligation that is in the report. The town, four town payments, the two percent net plant payments are issued to be sent a check on December twenty-eighth, totaling eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. The town of Wilmington, fifty-four percent, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The town of Reading at twenty-one percent, approximately a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. The town of North Reading, eighteen percent at a hundred and fifty-one thousand. And the town of Lynnfield, seven percent, fifty-five thousand dollars. Also with that, the town of Reading um payment to be issued on December twenty-eighth. This is the last time um that we have the payment at one point two million dollars. And then next year's will be the new calculation at the three point seven five uh mils. So here's a good look at the pie chart for cash. I know everybody seems to uh like this this chart. So right now we have a total of fifty-three million, nine hundred, thirty-six thousand dollars. And you can quickly identify, you know, which portion is restricted versus which portion is unrestricted. So in the operating fund, we have about uh nearly twenty-four million dollars, which is approxim, a little bit over two and a half months of uh operating expenses. And you know, we've targeted about between two to three months. So through COVID, we've been talking about accounts receivable just to get a idea where our customers are as far as payments and how the money's coming in the door. So if you look at um twenty twenty, this orange line right here with the orange dots, you can see how it how it happened. Um, so this is a five-year look, you can see how it happened. Um, the trend in January through March looked like it was going in the same direction through April, and May, and then here we go in June, it dipped, and that's where we saw the heaviest part of the COVID. Um, and then started to bring it back up, but still really below the curve with every other year that we had seen. And we've made uh so many strides with our customers, our credit and collections and customer service group. So you can see right here, this red line, this represents twenty twenty-one, how we've really come up with our uh receivables at thirty days now, not ninety days, thirty days. So we're above and and we're following the same trend, but we're still above uh percentage wise, working with our customers, making payment plans and making sure that uh we have a healthy cash flow. So sick leave buyback, uh, you know, it's a topic that's uh we've really been working on. The R M L D with uh Colleen has really focused on this through the through the negotiations and the contracts. So you can see back in June twenty seventeen, we were at about uh three, three million or so, three point one million dollars of of liability. And then we worked every year integrating a portion of the of the sick buyback opportunity through the through the contracts and limiting the sick buyback as well to thirty days now. And now you can see really the difference. This really speaks volumes here. We're about at two million now for a liability. And then I'd like to show you um the the capital spending versus the depreciation reserve. So the depreciation reserve is what absolutely needs to be reserved for capital spending. So what the what the idea here to show you is that the R M L D has made a commitment uh to continue to to invest in the infrastructure based on the recommendation, up to eight million dollars a year uh for this size, for this size utility and the infrastructure that's needed to continue for the safe and reliable system that we have here. So you can see every year, um, you know, we've gone above the uh depreciation reserve, which is why it's very important that we continue to meet uh the targets that we set out for the rate of return. And then the operating and maintenance expenses through September. So we are coming under budget again, COVID uh, you know, caused us some problems with the on and off construction. Yes, you can move, then you can't move. So we are under budget uh consistently every month and we will probably end the year under budget as well uh significantly. So, you know, we're we're trying to re recoup that, we're trying to get everything back on target, but unfortunately, our hands were tied in many areas. So I believe that uh concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Okay, hear hearing none? If I don't see anybody's hands, okay. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Um, moving on to item number ten, procurement requests for buying board approval. Let me, if you could, please.
Want the motion first, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Phil.
Okay. Move that bid R F P two thousand twenty-one dash two for air dash source heat pump rebate program support services be awarded to Adobe Energy Management LLC as the responsive and responsible proposer offering the most advantageous proposal on the recommendation general manager. This is a three-year contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, aye.
Mr. Pacino, aye. Aye.
Both are aye. Phil, I'm I'm sorry, Greg, if you want to present. You're already approved.
Yeah, so so thank you.
No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure. Uh, so at the end of the day, um, the the team at a boat, there are two um, two proposals that came in. They're both very strong technically. Um, and there was a bit of a price difference. But at the end of the day, this work that they do supports our air source heat pump um initiative. Um, we're we're relative to the other M L Ps, we're uh um have higher numbers on a per capita or per meter basis as well in terms of the number of heat pumps that are being installed. Um, a lot of the other M L Ps are copying our program and working with the boat as well. Anyways, all said and done, um, we've got a in twenty twenty, when we first started with them in the fourth quarter, um, it was a little bit of a bumpy road. Um, but we worked through the processes and processes in terms of what work they do for us and how we uh try and streamline the uh the approval of the incentives. Um, once the uh customers actually got some got systems installed, um, a boat provides a good advisory service, not to recommend services, but just to give the customers things to think about. And they also do recruiting and uh education of the uh uh of the contractors themselves so that so that more and more contractors are aware of air source heat pumps as being an alternative to uh natural gas and oil-based systems. All in all, it's uh it's working to be a pretty good program and we we thank you for the support to move it forward.
Thank you, Greg. All right, moving on to the next.
Okay. Move that bid two thousand twenty-one dash oh six for on dash call electrical maintenance and repair services be awarded to Daigle uh Electrical Construction Corp. For eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and zero zero cents pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty, section thirty-nine M is the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation general manager. This is a three-year contract.
Further discussion? Hearing none? Everybody second?
Did you get a second on that?
Not yet. Excellent. All those in favor?
Miss Pacino, aye.
Marlena Vida, aye.
Alba, aye.
Both are aye. All right, passes five zero.
Okay, ready for the next one?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Phil.
That I F P two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-three for five hundred M C M C U fifteen K V P R E P R underground uh primary cable be awarded to Arthur J. Hurley Company, Inc. For eighty-seven thousand, five oh seven pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one sixty-four, Section fifty-six on the recommendations on manager.
Further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm going to abstain on this because this is a client of a client and again, probably puts a whole nickel in my pocket.
All right, anytime we hear Hurley, you're out. Okay, so, okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh, aye.
Alba, aye.
That's four oh, all right.
Four and abstain.
Yep, we can move on to the next one.
Okay. All right, so one motion here?
Yes, please.
The R M L D Board of Commissioners approved the determination of uniqueness of property and waived the publication requirements for Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty B, Section sixteen with respect to the acquisition of land located at two fifty-one Ballard Vale Street, Wilmington, Mass, oh one eight eight seven.
Further discussion?
What's going on here?
Yeah, I don't really understand it.
Okay, the this is, let me explain to you. Uh, first, good evening and thank you for the opportunity. This basically is waiving the advertising requirements due to uniqueness of this situation uh that requires the substation to be near the one fifteen K V lines and also near the load center uh in that particular region in Wilmington. So uh that basically, we've been looking for land for past four years, five years, as you've been all uh been notified and you you've seen that, you know, the efforts that you've been making trying to acquire land and few opportunities that, you know, we couldn't go through. So this is the only area that, you know, we we it's available and the 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 actually the owners of the land is willing to, you know, sell that piece of parcel in order to build the substation. So that's waiving the advertisement requirements, that's all it do, because we're going to have to provide them a purchase and sales by January thirty-first. And, you know, and they're just advertising for the land at this point, it doesn't make any sense because, you know, there are known land and that on that the spree, i- i- it on that, uh, you know, strip of one fifteen K V lines are valuable that it's near the substation. Uh, so that's basically waiving the advertising rights, that's it, that's it.
Okay. Um, is there is a re, um, is it even necessary?
I mean, we're. Yeah, we did the same thing, we did the same thing uh for Route one twenty-five. Actually, when, you know, that parcel that, you know, we thought it was national grid and then uh in the reality was the town's land. So we did the same thing right there before we get into the purchase sales and didn't go through on for various reasons.
Sounds good, dotting an eye, crossing a T, correct?
Yes, exactly. So I'm going to give you the report on the exact session about the, you know, the status of the projects and where we are with it. So you'll see exactly what we are trying to do.
Is there a second then at this point?
Mr. Step Beck, second.
All right. All those in favor?
Miss Pacino, aye.
Mr. Step Beck, aye.
Mr. Chairman, aye.
Mar- Marlena, I'm I'm sorry, I didn't.
Marlena Vida, aye.
Okay, excellent, five zero, okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now we're moving down to uh scheduling. Um, okay, uh, I saw the doodle poll come out, Erica. Um, I don't know if we're having any uh um feedback yet from from anybody, Erica.
So for the, um, are you talking about the Ash Street tour or?
Yes, I saw your Ash Street tour and then uh, is that what you were referring to?
So this, I was just referring to the January meeting, but for the Ash Street tour, um, I have gotten a few responses so far and I have heard from a few of you who will not be attending the tour. So I think probably by the end of this week, I'll have a good idea of a date to do. It seems like um people are responding before they leave for the holiday for that tour. And then for the January meeting, I will be sending one out if this works for everyone, probably looking towards the end of January for the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to be away on the twentieth because I know in the C A B they're talking the twentieth, the twenty-seventh. I am not going to be in state in the twenty, on the twentieth, so the twenty-seventh would be a better date if we could do it.
If if I I could swap with you, Phil, if it was the twentieth and you could do February and I could do January.
Yeah, but that but then I won't be able to attend the regular meeting either, so. If we schedule on the twentieth, so.
Is what's your um? Are you, I, I, what? Are you gone for a week or are you gone?
Yeah, I'm gone for a week. I'm in Florida.
Hey, Kay.
I missed the cold in the snow.
Yeah.
So, Phil, you're out the twentieth to the twenty-seventh?
And and I'm sure you don't want to do the nineteenth, right, the day before you go away?
Let me look at the calendar on the nineteenth.
What about what about the eighteenth Tuesday?
Nineteenth is doable, nineteenth of that night is doable.
What what um, what's everybody's flavor for either a Tuesday or Wednesday?
Uh, eighteenth or nineteenth is fine with me.
I'm I'm okay with either date, um, Marlena or Dave.
I think they're fine.
I think they're fine, either one's fine with me.
Let's do the nineteenth if we could, that's a better date for me.
Okay. Um.
I got a big presentation in the morning of the nineteenth, so I just assume avoid that, okay?
Um, so does that work?
Nineteenth?
Yep.
That's correct. Does that work for the cab? Jason?
Uh, we'll have to put it out. Um, at the meeting, we we're gonna wait to see what you guys are doing and we're gonna put an email to see who's available.
Okay. All right, so we'll stick with that that schedule. Okey dokey.
The only thing is, I just have to check, but there is a meme meeting Plymouth. On the nineteenth. I'm not sure what time that is or if it's virtual, but it should be doable depending to have a meeting at night. I'm not sure if anyone's attending besides Colleen on that.
I think the memes are mostly at ten thirty and offered also on Zoom.
So then that should be fine. I'll double check on that, but we can plan on the nineteenth if that works.
At ten thirty P M?
A M.
Oh, it sounds like I I thought it was a, I thought it was one of the planning. Planning meetings that Reading has for the C P D group. Oh, my God, I thought we went late. Dear Lord. I uh. All right. Two meetings in one day. Who ever heard of that? Okay, that's a good, if you can keep bringing that out, that's a great schedule. So if you keep bringing that one up all the time, Erica, that's very helpful.
The um Warren schedule?
Yeah, yep, just. If you wanna keep forwarding that out, I I do find that helpful and I know I have to do something.
Yeah, absolutely. And I can do calendars too. And this is for twenty twenty two and it's basically even for everyone. I think it's like two and three across for A P payroll and cab meetings. That's what works out evenly.
Okay, excellent.
Great.
Um, all right. Um. We get to do the cab coverage, A P. All right, all right. So John, you're on, I'm on. Um, if you haven't done it yet, the rebates are big now. There there's a huge files, they come through, there's a lot of them. To Greg's point, very popular, so. Just be prepared, you gotta fish through, but you'll just see that there's there's a there's a lot of people taking advantage of that, commercial and residential. So it's a good program. You get to see the growth in it.
So call you to help me do it?
Yes, yes. Call Dave. Yeah, 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 okay. So, all right, uh, all right, so suggestion motion.
Before you close, I had a quick question. At the end of the last meeting, I asked whether we could give renewable choice to our uh our friends and family at at the holidays and. With a couple of days left, do I have to go Christmas shopping or can I buy renewable choice certificates for?
Um, what what we concluded, a colleague joined in here as well, but um, we know that.
I'm not joining. I I gave I had my. Answer back to Mr. Talbot like the next day and gave.
Did I miss it? Did I miss it?
No. No, you did not, because Greg was supposed to review it and send it. So go ahead, Greg. It's all you, buddy.
If you send something to me and I forgot, then I'm.
No, no, she's she's pushing on me, Dave. I didn't send it out, so.
Oh, okay.
At at the end of the day. Um, the the only mechanism that we have in front of you right now is a regular gift certificate, not a renewable choice gift certificate.
But, okay, but there's a problem with that. So uh. Commissioner Pacino brought that up in the past, so. By law, there's nothing that says that we can't have gift cards. But there's a lot of parameters around gift cards, like when they expire and tracking logistics, and that seems to be kind of a nightmare. So. Uh, there really wasn't any way to dovetail it into the billing system for the renewable choice. And then the gift card is probably, you know, we don't have enough staff to track that. So.
Okay.
So, sorry, Dave, I I did send, try to send something out right away.
My apologies.
That's fine. I understand. It's it's more complicated because those gift cards can expire and then there's all this tracking. Okay.
I heard you can get free pole chunks on the ad if you want to. That's a joke, sorry. All right. Um, okay.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I just wanted to remind the commissioners that that determination of uniqueness. And needs to be signed by everybody. So Erica is gonna set that up, so and send it uh for signature by all. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, thank you, let me. Okay, Phil, if you could.
If you're ready for the motion?
Yes, please.
The Board of Commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws. Chapter one sixty four, section forty seven D. Exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss competely sensitive issues regarding union negotiations. And to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property and return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
All those in favor?
Ms. Pacino, I.
I.
Both are I. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for the presentations, thank.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everybody.
You too.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.